Mayor, Councilmember Avila.
Here.
Councilmember Ayala. Councilmember Garcia.
She was with us. Councilmember Garcia? She's not, alright, we're gonna go ahead and move on. Go ahead. She's under somewhere.
Mayor Proton Hernandez.
He will not be with us here today.
Thank you. Mayor Lozano.
Present, thank you. This point, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to excuse Vice Mayor Mr. Paul Hernandez. That is my motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that, Mayor. And I also wanted to say that I'm here, I just had a temporary disconnection.
Alrighty, okay, was seconded by Councilmember Monica Garcia. Any objections? See, now it's a move, alrighty. Thank you very much. So, at this point, at this point, we'll go over to the, to the first item, which is the open session, study session, which is the 2020 LASSA Homeless Count. So at this point, I believe Mr. Manny Carrillo will be leading this.
Yes, well, Mayor, just thank you very much. My pleasure to introduce the team from LASSA. We have Clementina Verjan, as well as Eric Trer and Karen Lob, and they'll be providing a homeless count presentation. So I will turn it over to LASSA, and David Mortison will assist with the presentation. All you, all you need to do is just say next slide, and our IT staff member will go ahead and forward to the next slide.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for inviting me. My name is Clementina Verhan. I'm the Associate Director for Community Engagement at LA Homeless Services Authority, known as LASSA. I've been with LASSA for over 21 years. I actually oversee the Greater Los Angeles Homeless Count since its first one back in 2005. So it is my pleasure to be here with all of you to provide, you know, this presentation for Baldwin Park area. There's a couple of things we're gonna cover. If we go to the next slide, I'm hoping to cover a brief overview of the methodology. My data management colleagues are gonna go over some of the important methodological updates that happened this particular year. We're gonna dive in a little bit more into why we do a multiplier process, and, you know, kinda explain why it's done, and then also give some overview about how do we ensure that we are trying to get the most accurate data. And then we'll dive into the results of Baldwin Park, and just, you know, going to really dive in to where increases and where. I'll finish off with, you know, an update on homeless count 21. Next. So, um, the Greater Los Angeles Homeless Count is made up of different components. Right now, it's made up of four components. Most individuals know the street count, which is basically the unsheltered population, and it's, it's called a point-in-time count, because it's a census that is done for a particular point in time. We basically get over 8,000 volunteers to help us do the street count, and we cover all the streets, different areas, the river beds, you know, and there's definitely areas that are, we considered hard to count, that also get covered. But basically, we cover 4,000 square miles with those 8,000 volunteers. At the same time that we're doing the street count, we do a shelter count of all emergency and transitional housing programs, our safe havens. We also get data from hotels and motels that are set vouchers. With the street count portion, one of the things that people need to be aware of is the fact that it's a visual enumeration. We don't communicate where the individuals. We get the data of our homeless population by doing a demographic survey. So we basically interview individuals between December and March to get those demographic characteristics, and that then gets applied to our point-in-time number, which happens during the last 10 days in January. One of the things that we learned back in 2005 was that our unsheltered population, there is a small group of the youth that basically does not hang around with the general population. And so what we learned in 2005 was that we needed to do a separate count for our youth, particularly because, as it is, it's hard to identify regular individuals who are experiencing homelessness, but it's even tougher to identify youth. And I think the reason is because they hide so well because of safety concerns for themselves. So definitely, we started doing a separate youth count, and one of my colleagues is gonna go into more details about that process. The methodology that we do is HUD approved methodology. We've been working with the University of Southern California, who is our consultant for the statistical analysis, and also the demographic survey process. The data that we collect is very useful in the sense that it provides a sense of what, what's the state of homelessness in the area of LA? Have we increased, have we decreased? And it provides the resources, both from the federal government and also locally. It brings also a lot of information in the development of programs and policies, and then it also helps with engagement of the community in addressing the issue. Next slide, please. I'm gonna turn it over to my colleague Karen, who's gonna go over through the important methodological updates.
Hi, everyone. My name is Karen, I'm a data and research analyst at LASSA. So, as Clementina shared, the youth count has been conducted since 2007 separately, because they are a hidden population. But one update, methodological update that we implemented this past year was how we were enumerating the youth. So, after, you know, working with USC and community providers, we collected feedback after last year and found that the demographic survey that we were using to count youth and collect the information about the demographics was taking close to 20 to 30 minutes per youth. So it was really limiting the number of youth our teams could speak to, speak with. So we separated out the enumeration to a very short survey, and then also simultaneously did the demographic survey, that's Clementina just reviewed. So, it's both, this methodological update is both, it both is more, it gives us a more accurate count, but also reduces the burden on surveyors and service providers. And we actually just released that data last week, and that shall be up online if you wanna see it. And then we also made a few other methodological updates that are equally as important and interesting. So the next one I wanna go over is the family count. So the family count, there was an 80% rise in unsheltered families this year across the COC, across LA's continuum of care, and this was largely due to increased surveys. So we were able to partner with some family solution centers, outreach centers, and really increase the number of surveys from 80 to 180 this year. So the new number, the new number is considered more accurate, a more accurate baseline to look at unsheltered. And so the, the next methodology, methodological update that I wanna go over is changes in a few health questions in our, in our demographic survey. So in previous, in the previous survey, respondents were asked if they had problematic drug use or alcohol use, right? But again, we're always trying to improve this survey, really driven by people with lived experience and people from the community. So, after getting some feedback, we changed the wording of some of these questions from problematic drug use to difficulties with drugs or alcohol use. This is more aligned with our CES triage tools, and also it's just a more common form approach. In addition to changing some of the wordings, we also added an follow-up question for every health condition. So after every health condition, we asked if this condition was long-term. So that gave us a better sense of, you know, did folks have difficulties or struggle with such health condition, and was it long-term? Previously, there was only one question for all of the health conditions. So the results, that resulted in doubling, the doubling of unsheltered people who reported substance use. But this shouldn't really be interpreted as a growth in the population, but just a better, more data, more accurate data capture. It gives us a new level of specificity, especially with that additional question about duration. Next slide.
Thank you.
So, I wanna, yeah, I wanna mention this because it also affects our chronic numbers, our chronically homeless numbers. So by HUD's definition, chronically homeless is not just how long someone's been homeless. They also actually consider disabling health conditions. And one such disabling health condition is substance use. So you can see if our substance use numbers went up, our chronic homelessness would also go up. So the increase is actually about 54% in the number of people that met HUD's definition. So now it's about 25,000. And I also wanna stress that we, year-to-year comparisons in chronic homelessness, they're not comparable, just because the, quite the change in that health condition question is quite significant. Next slide, please. Alright, so those were all of the methodological updates. I wanna kinda transition into that next piece of multipliers. So why are multipliers? So as Clementina explained, when we go out and do that street count, all of our volunteers, all of the staff, they, they do a visual count, right? They, they look at folks, they see what's there, they count tents, they count cars, they never actually knock on, you know, car doors or tent doors to ask how many people are inside. But that leaves us, you know, with, well, how can we estimate how many people are in such dwellings? But we call CVRTMs, the long acronym, CVRTMs. So how that data is actually collected is through the demographic survey. Through those thousands of surveys, we ask folks, you know, where were you staying last night? Was it in one of these types of dwellings? How many people were staying with you? And all of that data allows us to estimate how many people, on average, are living in such dwellings. And they're, they differ, because we have, we administer surveys across the whole county, right? So we end up having multipliers that are different by spa, by like every spa, and then also they're different by the dwelling type. So, within Spa 3, the number of Irish people in a car would be very different from the, like, average number of people in a camper, right? That could probably hold a few more people. So that's just some things to consider. That's really why we need to use this multiplier, because we're unable to see inside these dwellings. And then, as a part of that, these CVRTMs estimates the number of people, that in addition to the number of people actually counted on the streets, and then the number of people residing in shelters, that makes up the total population for each of these city and community reports that we've provided. It's important to also note that there are a few things that are not included in these, in these reports, that's unsheltered youth, really because their count is done separately, and then also persons in domestic violence shelters, and then persons receiving hotel vouchers. Next slide. Then Clementina, do you wanna go over some of the preparation?
Yeah. So, um, in how do we ensure that there's an accurate count? So we do it in three different phases. Before the actual count happens, during the count, and then after. So when we prepare, we basically do different types of trainings. We do trainings for our deployment site coordinators, who are basically, most of the times, that a city staff, and who have had, most of the times, more than one experience doing a count. We also do training videos for our volunteers. And one of the reasons why we ended up doing a training video versus having my community engagement coordinators for every single running area actually train the deployment site coordinators, who would then train volunteers, was that we wanted to make sure there was consistency across the board, because, you know, somebody's interpretation about what was being said might affect, you know, how it got implemented. So we basically developed a training video for consistency. And what the deployment site coordinators or my staff basically do is help with responding some of those fuzzy areas during the point-in-time count. We also utilize a lot of individuals as partners. So, you know, our law enforcement, our park and rec staff, and our experienced volunteers, they're very familiar with our tracks, and know exactly where people are sleeping at night. So that helps with a couple of things, identifying those hard-to-count areas, identifying those hotspot areas where you'll see concentrations of individuals, and then areas of safety concern. So we basically would assign what census tracts get selected for volunteers, and what census tract gets selected for special teams. So that's during the preparation phase. During the night of the count, we basically do deployment site coordinators, we thoroughly go through the tally sheets of the teams that got deployed. So they're asked to make sure, the volunteers are asked to make sure that they actually put on the maps in areas that might not have been covered and due to safety concerns, or they just didn't get to it just because of timing. And so we all know some tally sheets that the areas have not been completed versus a completed census tract. So that's like really one of the parts of it. We also try to have lots of staff available at different deployment sites. Again, this is one of the things that, you know, we can definitely improve upon. There are over 100, almost 165 deployment centers over the three nights, and to have lots of staff in every single one of them, it has been a little bit more difficult, but the, our goal is to have a lot of staff there to provide onsite support. After the, the count, so after everybody closes and that brings the materials back to LASSA, we review all the materials that gets returned from the deployment sites. We check to make sure that every single tally sheet was returned, every census tract was covered, and if those census tracts were not covered, we basically assign teams to go back. So there will be a follow-up and their specialized counts, because some of the areas did not get covered during that particular night, or because there were some safety concerns, or as we're going through the tally sheet data, it shows that there was a high difference between one year and another, and so we'll do, we'll send us a team to do that. And we also have special teams that cover the river beds and large encampments, and of course, the special safety concern areas. After that, we do ongoing improvement every single year. One of the things that we do is debrief with deployment site coordinators, their assistants, and again, most of the deployment site coordinators are made from staff of the different cities. We conduct surveys, we have a homeless count advisory board that also provides feedback, and then we utilize our lived experience advisory boards, both compiled by adults and also from youth. And we also use our service providers to provide that feedback for us. We do this on a yearly basis, and one of the things that we did this year was actually have a meeting with all the different independent cities, neighborhood councils, and our council of governments. So moving forward, I wanna continue implementing where we work with the different cities to be able to have a better communication about the homeless count and that process. So that's how do we ensure an accurate count? Next slide, please. So these are the results for LA County. So this includes Pasadena, Long Beach, and Glendale, so you'll see a little bit of a difference for the Spa 3 versus the data summary. So this includes the data from Pasadena. Next slide. These are all the different data that is available, and particularly, the first one, where we have cities and local communities dashboard. That particular dashboard is very interactive, and we're gonna go a little bit, dive into that a little bit further. The next thing that's really important for, to annotate for you, is the housing inventory count. So that's for every single community, those programs that we have on our inventory that has either an emergency program, transitional housing program, a safe haven, and programs for our veteran population, domestic violence. So it's our whole housing inventory count. That's where we get our shelter population from. And then again, the link to number eight is the independent cities data summary, which again, we'll go into a little bit more detail. Last week, we released the youth count results, and I can actually send you the presentation and some of those key messages, but it should be also available on our website. And for any homeless count data, basically just going to our homeless count website, you'll see a lot of data for this year's new, new results. Next slide, and I'm gonna turn it back to my data management team, so can I go into more of what you will see in those dashboards, as well as the data reports?
Everyone, I wanna thank you again for making time for our presentation and to talk through the homeless count. Like Clementina shared, I'll be talking through the city and community data, and specifically Baldwin Park data. And what you're seeing here is our city and community report template. These data summaries include unsheltered numbers, number of persons in shelters by shelter type, and a map of the area, as well as a count of the number of cars, vans, RVs, tents, makeshift shelters tallied on the night of the count. On the right, you'll see spa demographics. We try to, we pair every community report with its respective spa demographics page. It's important to note that the demographics are only available at the spa level, and we're not able to provide it at a smaller geographic level than that. And so for this reason, we generally refer to just whichever service planning area that community is in when talking more broadly about demographics. Next slide, please. And so here, you're seeing the city and community dashboard. The dashboard, like Clementina said, is much more interactive, but it's the same information, and you can essentially go onto our website, and up there in that top box in the middle, you can select or type out a community name, and that will zoom in on the map, and also give you the respective total homeless population numbers, as well as the respective unsheltered persons, sheltered persons in your rear graph. So it's kind of a neat feature to play around and to look at changes and look more closely at individual census tract. Next slide. So here, we wanna talk through Baldwin Park data specifically, and just give a little bit of a background. As, as you may have seen, Baldwin Park number is 556, and we do want to share that this type of template is, has been shared with Baldwin Park, and you can also access this information online. And to talk a little more about the details, could we go to the next slide? What we're seeing is a spread of persons all unsheltered, but a large spread across the different CVRTMs, or across vehicles and across dwellings. It, we did see an increase in Baldwin Park from 2019, the total persons on the street. Last year, the total persons on the street was 98, this year it was 123, but I think more significantly, we're seeing increases in every kind of vehicle and dwelling type. Some of those increases are larger than others. The largest single increase in terms of dwellings was actually tents. Tents increased, we estimated 16 people were in tents in 2019, and we estimate 84 persons were in tents here in 2020. And that, that is a large fluctuation, but we did also notice that in 2018, the tents number was 50. So we were just sort of seeing a little bit of fluctuating numbers over the past three years here. And if we can go to the next slide, we can talk more specifically about where these changes occurred. Okay, so here's a closer map of Baldwin Park, and the two green tracks on the map are the tracks that saw the largest decrease, and the four other tracks are in black, are the tracks that saw some of the largest increases. And yeah, again, while the homeless count number overall went up, it's not the same story in every part of Baldwin Park, and we sort of wanna have that deeper dive here to explain some of that. Generally speaking, though, when we're looking at both increases and decreases in particular areas, it is resulting because of changes to vehicular homelessness. There's also some changes to the total number of people on the street, but in, you know, 404701, for example, we're, we're seeing a reduction in, in vehicular homelessness in tents and encampments, and in the other black census tracts, we're seeing increases. If we go to the next slide, we can talk a little more about that. And so here's just a little more of a detailed explanation of each individual tract and what has occurred. And again, generally speaking, it's, it's vehicles, it's dwellings, the two tracks that saw the largest increase, as you saw, were on the southernmost part of Baldwin Park, and it was because of very large increases in specifically tents, cars, and encampments. The other tracks that saw increases, saw increases in vans and RVs and a little bit of encampments. And the decrease, again, was a decrease in some of these very same items, but just in different areas. And actually, if you could go back a slide, one thing you'll see is that some of the largest decreases are right next to some of the largest increases, and we have seen this when looking at other communities, that when you look at an individual tract that might have increased, you might see a tract right next to it that has significantly dropped, and vice versa. Just something to make note of. But other than that, we could go to the next slide, and I think one more. Or actually, yeah, the homeless count 2021 update is perfect. And I think at this point, unless anyone has any immediate questions about the data, we can hand it over to Clementina to talk through homeless count 2021 updates.
So, I'll finish with homeless count 21, and then we'll open it up for questions. The last two slides are basically where to get help, and also our point of context, so that you have that information. For homeless count 21, as we are in the pandemic, there is a lot of uncertainty, but there's a couple of things that you should know. HUD mandates to do a homeless count every odd year. Homeless count 21 is basically a mandated year. So one of the things that we've been talking to with HUD is basically, what will that look like? The shelter count housing inventory, most of that is being collected through our HMIS programs, and for those that are not participating in HMIS, they fill out a survey. So most, and in a lot of the other communities across the United States, the shelter count housing inventory really is already in their HMIS data, so that's easier to pull. So that, more likely than not, is going to be required. And the unsheltered count, right now, it's unknown, only because HUD has not really said yes, no, possibly optional, but what we do know right now is that they have three options in place. Use homeless count 2020 unsheltered data, do a sampling with also a survey, so a sampling of your jurisdiction, so, you know, doing only a certain number of census tracts out of the, over 2,000 census tracts, only pull a sample of those, or to do a complete count. We all know that with the pandemic, the biggest obstacle is gonna be volunteers, and also the cost of providing, you know, equipment for individuals to make sure that everybody is safe. HUD has basically, in the past, provided guidance on, or any updates regarding our homeless count during October. They're planning on keeping that date, but what they have hinted at is that that particular information will provide some of the best practices about how to conduct a non-sheltered count. So for example, what they may say in this particular guidance is, you know, you're gonna do a street count, instead of having your teams being a four, four-member teams, you know, utilize two. Instead of having to do, actually, you know, getting off and counting a particular area, you might wanna consider it being a driving tract, and only get off in certain particular areas. So there's definitely gonna be some kind of guidance on best practices. One of the things that, as we talked about funding, the NOFA, which is the Notice of Funding Availability for the Community of Care Application, there is a section there that actually scores every jurisdiction, whether or not they do a homeless count, and you are penalized for not doing a sense, a homeless count. And it also impacts your performance measures. And so that, they're trying to get rid of that scoring criteria, but as of stance right now, that is still in place. And then, everybody knows, and it has already been basically explained, and HUD will acknowledge that for homeless count 21- that for homeless count 21, there will be methodological changes that will have to be made. And it will make it hard for us to compare to other years. Just because if we end up doing, you know, sampling versus what we've been doing a complete count. We're going to have to put an asterisk on this particular year's data. One of the things that, you know, in the option of, you know, not utilizing homeless count 2020 data. The biggest obstacle is that, you know, we know that there is going to be an impact because of the pandemic. And so not taking advantage of the fact to try to get as much information of what happened because of pandemic and how many individuals fell into homelessness does not make sense. And so we are going to definitely wait to get a little bit more guidance from HUD. But this is where we stand right now. One of the things that would, Los is going to definitely do is talk with all of our independent cities, our partners, our service providers. Because we rely so heavily on your involvement. And so we're going to definitely reach out to you to talk about what kind of resources there are in place, will be in place. And be honest about what, you know, we're going to be able to do if we decide that we definitely want to do a count. So I will stop there and open it up to questions.
All right, this point council members have any questions?
I don't have questions, but I do have comments. I'm not sure. I was, I have to do the homeless council to you, mayor. I remember seeing you there. That number seems a little high based on what I saw. And you were out there, I was out there, my family members were out there. And that number just seems a bit high and also compared to the people that I see on the street. It just seems a bit too high for me. I don't understand exactly how we got a number that high.
Oh, someone else want to speak? I just want to also say that I, I'm like council member Leandra Ivela. I have a difficult time in actually recognizing that we had that amount of homelessness. I see that you're taking into account people and vehicles and so on and so forth. These past couple of weeks, well, a couple of weeks I was not able, but that I've been out. It's in, and I've taken just a visual count because you mentioned, you guys have done visual count and also demographic. So, and I've gone under the, the tunnels that separate Baldwin Park and El Monte. Yes, you have a population that's down there, but I don't know it all equates to 500. And this number in itself, I don't think it's fair for Baldwin Park. I mean, I'm more opt to seeing if we ourselves, when the city could conduct our own, thin up the city in specific districts and make our own count. I'm just, I'm just, I just don't, the number itself seem to add up. And if you ask, the average resident in Baldwin Park, by giving this number which I have, they disagree with the number. But again, anyone else wish, I'm glad you brought that up. I mean, I don't, I'm just kind of, I just, for some odd reason, Baldwin Park, we always get hit. When we get hit, we get hit hard. I mean, what is the neighboring, let me just give an example, Clementina, what is, what is the homeless population in the city of El Monte? Do we have that data?
I don't have it in front of me, but I'm not sure Eric can pull it up?
Yeah, for 2020, the data for El Monte shows a total homeless count of 433.
433 and for some, and we're at 500 and what?
56.
56, not a curiosity. Do you have the number from the city of West Covina?
It would just take a moment to pull it up. I can bring it up right now.
And you know, mayor, I've also done the right amongst of the police department where we actually go under the wash. Yes. Surrounding areas, including Monrovia, Armani and all of those areas. And again, I've done it under the washes and to do, you know, the outreach. And again, those numbers just don't add up based on the times I've gone out, the day we did the count. They just don't seem like it should be that high.
Yes, I agree.
I think it's also definitely right now, what we see is definitely different from where it was in January. And I think that's also a lot to take into consideration that what you see now is not probably what it was in January. But I also want to like allude to it is the fact that when we do the multiplier piece, again, because we don't interview the individuals that we see. We basically take the demographic survey and apply it to the, the account itself. Basically, it's for the spa. So the, those multipliers are at the service planning area level. They're not at, you know, a smaller community level where it were probably, you know, the, the number of people staying in a tent might be different for individuals in your city compared to the average for the whole spa three. So I think that's where you might be seeing the discrepancy is that you're getting the average for the spa three versus what is actually in your particular community. And the only way to be able to get those specific details would be to interview and make sure that. And just so you know, in order to get that reliable data, demographics at a city level. We literally have to count and interview every single person in that particular city. And I think that's the biggest part that is very hard to understand that. You literally would have to count and interview every single individual for our local community level data to be really at a high confidence standard.
Clement, let me ask a question, but that hasn't been done, am I correct?
That, that at the city level, we take samples, we all interview individuals in different communities, correct?
But you also, you indicated that at the start that you guys conducted by virtue demographics. So in essence, you guys are citing them like what we've done when we've gone out and counted, am I correct?
I missed what you said when we, so go ahead.
At the beginning, you stated that the, been conducted by virtue, I guess, by citing, right?
Yes.
The demographics in itself. So see, that's when I kind of, I really have a hard time taking in that we had that amount. And now not find out that the city of El Monte has less than us. I mean, it's like, wow, that's incredible. That is really incredible. And I will continue to question that number and I have, and by the Tribune as well. But council members.
And it's funny you say that because I actually done the outreach in the city of El Monte as well. And yes, I did see, I actually thought more in El Monte, but I don't know, I don't, I'm not sure exactly how these counts are, are done. I know she does an average, but it just doesn't, it just doesn't add up in my head. And it doesn't add up when we're walking down the street and even in the areas that the homeless seem to be, it just doesn't add up.
As a matter of fact, when you, certain police officers that are out there, they, I think they would read to that number from, from controlling throughout the community, they'd probably give you more of a number of 100 to maybe no more than 200. So that's why, I mean, I differ, I differ with the study. And at the same time, I'm also questioning the validity of it in general. Not from my perspective and nothing to do with those that participated, but I just have to be upfront about that.
And I agree with you, mayor. I think our police department would actually can give us a better count or average even of how many homeless we really have in our city. And I don't believe they'll agree with 500. And that's a good question to ask them.
I also wanted to point out, so on your, on the Baldwin Park, the community profile, there's a section that says dwellings counted. There are, I just did the math, there are about 237 of these dwellings. So cars, vans, RVs, tents, makeshift shelters. So if there are already 237 of those and there's at least one person in each of those, that's already 200. That's a lot. It makes up a significant chunk of the people. And it's, it's just, again, Clementina said that, you know, this multiplier is used on, is taken from the spa level. But if, like, we did count or volunteers did count all of those CVRTMs. So it's definitely not just folks that are on the street, but also folks that are in cars, vans, tents. Another thing that I would consider is also that these counts are, and I know Mayor Lozano and council member Avila, you were both participated, but it's like, the, the count is also done at night. So at night, a different population of homeless folks may be present than what's typically out maybe during the daytime on outreach. So just another thing to keep there.
Hey, everyone. This is Eric Scher with Los. I'm just wanting to add on to what Karen has shared. Do you want to emphasize that this is a point in time count? And we do mobilize resources and check quality checks in order to ensure that this point in time count has the highest quality that it's possible. But it still is a count done at just one point in time. And it's barely likely that if done at other periods of time, it could change. But I do want to, I want to share, mayor and council member, that your intuition and your experience about the homeless numbers not necessarily changing so significantly. Our, our data is largely in agreement with that. When we're looking at where the changes occur in Baldwin Park, there are some small changes in across most of Baldwin Park. But most of Baldwin Park is relatively the same. It relatively evens out when it increases here, it decreases there. But it's the southernmost part of Baldwin Park where we saw a large magnitude of increase. So that is sort of the, the driver of the number, the magnitude of the number. It's not necessarily that we're saying that homelessness is going up everywhere. It's, it's really concentrated according to the data. And so in that way, when I hear what you're saying about your day to day experiences, in some ways that seems a little bit consistent. The fact that when we're identifying large increases, they're really concentrated in small places. And overall, it's a little more even than last year.
Find out the, the West Covina count?
Yeah, I, 124.
Eric, I have a question. This is council member Monica Garcia. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. I think what would be helpful, I do agree with the mayor and councilwoman about, at least visibility wise. These numbers don't match what we see day in, day out, night in, night out in our community. And I think that's what we're really trying to wrap our heads around. So I think it would be really helpful if we could understand how you calculated 556. What brought us to that number? And I've heard the methodology, I've heard, you know, the average of the spa, things like that. It would be helpful if you could break this down for us. And for example, you know, if there's an average number multiplier, what does that look like? We want to see it like a breakdown. And then also can we get a breakdown by each tract? So I can't remember when we did the count, you know, we all split into teams and we took one or two tracks. I can't remember exactly what you, what you call those tracks. But it would also be helpful to us to understand what tracks have those shelters that Karen just mentioned. The number of those shelters that Karen just mentioned, or the number of unchallenged individuals, you know, in different tracks. I think that would help us to understand, you know, where are the hotspots in the community? And where are they supposedly hiding as well? Because I do see, I will say this, in Santa Fe Dam and the wash, we do have a higher population of homeless. And I would imagine that that's where they hide. But I'm very curious to know within city limits, you know, where these youth are. And how can we, how can we know where they, where they're present? And how can we outreach to them to offer assistance as a city? So the breakdown will really inform us. And I think it will help us understand your methodology, your calculation, you know, thinking and so forth. And also the definition, the definitions are important for us to understand. So do you think that you can provide that information to us?
Yeah, some of the things you're requesting are not something we could provide tonight necessarily. But it's a thing that we could provide, specifically the changes by census tract splits. That is something that we could provide. But I know you also asked some more conceptual questions that I can't answer now. And I would, I would like to do so if that's okay. But essentially, how we're actually getting these numbers is because the shelter count for Baldwin Park is zero, it's a little more straightforward. All of the numbers come from the tally sheets essentially. And as you know, as someone who was out there on the night of the count, there's tallies for individuals who are adults. There's tallies for young adults and we have a separate box for families. Though generally on the night of the count, we just see individual adults, the majority of people counted. And underneath that, we have the cited vehicles, tents, makeshift shelters. And those are tally. In Karen Law, my colleague, explained the overall process and how we derive multiplier. Which is essentially surveys in the service planning area that talk to unchallenged persons who have lived or slept within those dwellings. And we get an average amount of persons in those dwellings and we essentially.
Okay, so let me stop you there. We, we would like to see a breakdown of everything that you've just explained. So the tallies of the day of and how you categorize them, the category that Karen.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the category that Karen mentioned, and I think, I am sorry, it's not sticking. It's something, it's like.
All the dwellings. Yeah, it's all the dwellings.
Okay, what is it Karen? Tell me what is it?
It's CBRTM, cars, vans, CBRTM, yeah.
Okay, CBRTM. So yes, so CBRTM, thank you. Yeah, so if we could see the data and its breakdown of the count. And you know, the CTVRs, the tally, you know, however you want to provide it to us. But I think we want to see a breakdown. And then attached to that breakdown, we want to understand the average and the multiplier. How, how that is factored in to the 556. Essentially what I'm asking for is what is the formula that brought us to 556? And I think we would like to see a breakdown of that so that we can clearly understand it, understand your thinking. And maybe at that point we'll say, oh, okay, this makes sense because this is visible. And then they're taking the average of the spa area, which is kind of, it's a different number than what is visible. And I think that will help bridge, you know, the discrepancy of what we see and what we feel in our community to how you're calculating. Does that make sense?
That makes sense. I want to share that because of this large increase, we have already pulled tally sheets specifically for Baldwin Park and reviewed them multiple times. And so we can certainly share that information with you. What I, what I do just want to share though, is that what you're going to see with a closer review is that the majority of these increases result from two particular tally sheets, from two particular census tracts. And one, for example, the volunteers tallied, I believe, 35 tents in one census tract alone. And in that same census tract, they tallied 40 individual adults and 36 individual young adults. So, and that's not even the extent of that tally sheet. There were more people that were counted. So we can sort of share how we get from tents to the multiplier persons in tents. And we can share the specific numbers. But you're going to see that at one, even when you have the formula, it's largely going to revolve around two areas that just had a lot of tallies put down by the volunteers in the night of the count.
Right, and that's what we want to, that's what we want to see. That's what we want to understand. And that's part of how you derived the 556. And so we just want to follow your thinking, you know, how you got there, what you calculated, what you factored in. So that would be helpful. I mean, the way that I envision this is the count by census tract. I'm sure you have that already because that's how you calculated, you know, your numbers. I'm sure you have that readily available. I'm sure you have that readily available. And I, I, I assumed that we would see the hotspots because, again, it's, it doesn't seem widespread in the community. And, and I've never really seen forty tents anywhere, so I'd like to just know what census tract, you know, that information was, was gathered from, and to, to know where that exists. So that's all. So, you know, by the census tract, the count, the day of the count, the multiplier, the average, the spa, you know, what, what number that is. And let's see, the CTRVs, you know, I guess that would be part of the day, the, the count. So however you want to break it down, but that's what I envisioned.
And if I may, if I may add, this is Eurico with the Recreation Department. I know that we work together, Eric and Clementina, very closely while ensuring the accuracy of the count numbers, and several challenges are still present. Based on the presentation today, the ensuring that the count is, is accurate, starting with the deployment site coordinators. I know that we did speak to some challenges around that about us not having the, those census tracts identified as hotspots. Because like we said, we do work very closely with our PDs, with our Public Works Department, as well as our Recreation and Social Services Department. So maybe perhaps if any data shifts of outreach specifically to those two areas, if those areas were perceived as hotspots that we understand that we would have identified those completely internally within our team. But what we're, what we're really struggling is with the fact that it, in fact, those, those numbers truly don't reflect, not just that, that the night of the count, which we understand is a point in time, but the actual trends that happen within our community. So if we can go into that as well as the, if there's any opportunity at this point, I know we were limited with the, with, with not having the opportunity to, to keep that confidentiality prior to the count being released, which we absolutely respect. But now that, you know, the number is out, and especially provided that the 2021 count would be heavily influenced by the 2020 count, we want to make sure that our count for 2020 is as accurate as possible so that we're not having to rely on that kind of foundation, five fifty-five for 2021, if that does become the case. So now more than ever, it is more important for our city to, to receive a more accurate count. And if there are opportunities where we could go back to those tally sheets, where we have already identified those two census tracts as being questionable and challengeable, what could be done about that? And I, and I do welcome the opportunity that Clementina and the La Sasa team has provided to us to further enhance the counts for future years. But we do understand that this, that this 2020 count is crucial, especially given the fact that, you know, provided that this will have a deep influence on 2021. So, yeah, I, I would just like to add that in, in, in hopes that we may have either continued dialogue or an opportunity to continue to dive in into those two census tracts that perhaps have a, a, a few, more than one human error, as well as, you know, deployment site coordination flaws that did not happen, right? So you mentioned that in the, in, during the count, if there is abnormalities or shifts in that, in those numbers or those census tracts being completely different than previous years, that La Sasa would have that communication. And that did not happen in 2020. So, you know, we want to just make sure that these, that what is being presented today, that we actually follow that format and to, to, to see if we can fulfill a more accurate 2020 count, if that opportunity is presented.
So Eurico, based on, I, I'm looking at all the, the sheets and reports that Mr. Carrillo sent us. Since we know which area there was, it was the seven oh three, the one that is in seven oh three and eight oh three area. There's actually a little track map of the areas. As a city, can we actually go out there and, and we do account, and would that be valid?
It will not. We did, once the, because, we do understand the HUD regulations that La Sasa has set, Councilmember Abila. So it is a point in time count. When, when the numbers were released to us several weeks prior to the official release, we did go out. Our social services team did go out at night, four nights, to recount that and kind of see if similar trends were, were apparent. They were not. However, we do understand that they cannot utilize a dataset that is from March to account for a January point in time, correct? We do understand that, but we also are interested in, in the actual trends that happen. Has there been an increase of outreach? Because with these high numbers, you're talking higher than Pasadena, right? I would assume that there's a much higher response rate out in these areas, which we have not seen at the city level. We have not been, you know, we have, I've checked with our, our Public Works. We haven't coordinated any encampment cleanups, anything of that sort that might reflect what the numbers that were provided kind of incorporate within that. So, yes, so to answer your question, Councilmember Abila, we already did do that in the pre-face of these number being pre-released. So in that part of that communication piece, we did have an opportunity to do that. However, did understand La Sasa's position that we can't use like a March, you know, point in time to reflect January.
Thank you for that.
Hi, can I add just a little bit more? So when we release the local community level data, this is information that basically we're sharing with all the different cities. And one of the things that I keep telling cities is, this is what you can utilize as a tool to communicate to funders, to different entities, to talk about your homeless population and the efforts that you're doing. So I think it's not to, our homeless count number process, it involves all of you. And I think, you know, the, the whole part is that this is just one of the stories that needs to be said within the messaging about what's happening in your community. You should talk about everything that you're actually doing and the fact that you have gone out, you've been able to outreach to all the individuals, you have been able to work with your police department. And I think it's more about framing how you have invested in your community. And basically, you will continue to do that. And I think that's the piece where it's, the, the number is just a number, but it's all the efforts around it to, that you utilize in order to reduce it, that I think should be concentrated in the messaging.
And, and we, and I appreciate that Clementina, and, and like I shared with, in the past, in our meetings, we do have one of the most unprecedented efforts around homelessness with both the collaborative piece with the neighboring cities, El Monte, South El Monte, as well as the county, as well as La Sasa. So to us, although it is a number, it is a, a, a reflection of the multitude of programs and projects that we have in, we have been heavily, you know, engaged in, reporting for the past three to four years. So it definitely does create a huge impact, especially to those community stakeholders, to our church groups, to our district who look to the city. And, and really coming together as a, as a, as a stakeholder community around homelessness to be able to address this, which is, which is why we feel very strongly about the accuracy of the homeless count.
Let me just say that I was looking at Pasadena, five hundred and forty-two. Pomona, four hundred and two. So again, I am definitely not sold out on this number. I think what the city should do, yes, I recognize that they've conducted a study, is do an independent study on our own. Cut up the community in, 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 in districts, and let's do our, our count as well. It just always seems that for some odd reason, when it comes to ballpark, we get hit like five times more than any other city. Now, again, I'm not questioning the validity, but I think we also have a responsibility to do an independent study on our own. It's something we're going to have to do next several months or so, and look at the potential planning for, so that we ourselves get an actual number. When I go under the, the, when I've gone under three times, and I went one, one time with Councilmember Gina Yala, under the, yes, there is a population that goes back and forth from Almani, from Almani to Baldwin Park. But then again, I'm just wondering, I, I just, I, again, you asked the, you asked the average resident in Baldwin Park that we have five hundred homelessness, homeless individuals, and they will tell you where are they. Now, I understand, I just, I disagree with this count. I personally don't think that it, it represents a homeless population in our city. Yes, we are working with South Almani and Almani. Homelessness is a crisis, and it's an epidemic that's affecting all the cities throughout the community. But when I look at the numbers, West Covina at a hundred, Pomona at four hundred and two, Pasadena five hundred and forty. Those are, those are cities a lot, a lot, a lot bigger for miles than the six point seven. So that's why I have a hard time when I'm looking at them. Look at West Covina, which is, I think, close to nine point something square miles than Pasadena, I believe, maybe closer to about, something like ten or fifteen. And Pomona, a square miles, it, it is amazing how, how this number came up. And I, 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 as mayor, differ with, with this particular study.
And Clementina, thank you, Mayor. Is there opportunities? I know that in the past years, cities have had the opportunity to revisit some of those homeless count numbers. Where do we stand in terms of taking a closer look or re, re-engaging in some of those conversations and dialogues about, now that we are able to, to be more in, you know, being able to share this information more broadly? What is your experience moving forward if we would have that type of opportunity to kind of take a deeper dive for those numbers for 2020?
You know what? Hold, hold on, let me just ask a question. This is already, if someone goes online and looks up Baldwin Park, we're going to get this five hundred and some odd number, am I correct? I mean, so regardless of what we do right now, we're already online with a number that's questionable. And it's unfortunate that you have the surrounding cities, and Baldwin Park gets the biggest hit, like always. So what's new? And that's unfortunate. I just, I disagree with this number. I really do. I don't think it represents homelessness that we have in, in our city. And I just want to make, I want to air that very clearly. So.
Mayor.
In short, hold on. In short, I don't know what can be done at this point, other than we take an independent study on our own, subdivide the city and, and subdivide the city and start our count, which includes the, the, the flow of bridges as well. But Councilmember Monica Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so Clementina, I, I wanted to, along the same lines of your comments, I wanted to express that, you know, Baldwin Park, and Eurico knows this firsthand, has worked with La Sasa so that we can understand the homeless population in our community. And I just want to put that at the forefront. You know, when you guys started doing the count, we jumped on board. And every year, we've been consistent, we've, you know, provided resources, and we thank you for, for the resources that you've provided as well. So I just want to share that. And I don't want you to think that we put our heads in the sand when it comes to the homeless and the homeless population. Every one of us has a, you know, a huge concern for the homeless population. And, and we've all, we've all made it a priority of how can we serve, you know, these individuals? I know I have called our city staff and have asked that staff go out, outreach to a homeless individual to offer services time and again. And I'm sure that every one of the council members, including the mayor, has done that. So I think what the, what you're hearing today is it doesn't, you know, these numbers just don't add up to what we experience in our community. I've lived in this community for more than forty years. So please hear me and hear the council members and the mayor when we say it does not feel like there are five hundred and fifty-five, five hundred and fifty-six homeless individuals and forty encampments and things like that. I'm like, where? But I do want to work with you, and I do want our city to continue working with you, like we have. We've had a very good partnership. And I want us to get a better understanding of what those numbers are. Why? Because as policymakers, we do want to be able to get the funding. We do want to be able to think through policies, programs, services. And when there's a number that just doesn't make sense to us, we're going to, you know, we're going to question, we are going to question. I spent a lot of time in Pasadena, and I'm really having a hard time now that I'm hearing that Pasadena has a lower count than the city of Baldwin Park. Now, I really, you know, I'm really, I really am interested in seeing the breakdown and how that number was, was derived at. So I, I'm looking forward to getting that information so that I can be informed, so that this council can be informed, so that the city can be informed as to how we can best serve the homeless population. And understanding, you know, the number of individuals versus the number of families, the number of individuals that are on the street versus the number that are in CRTVs, all of that information, which I know you have readily available. All of that will, will certainly help us at this point in time. And I do agree that if we, if we don't see something that is credible and that makes sense, and I'm not saying that, you know, your process is not credible, but if it doesn't make sense to us, then I would have to agree with the mayor that, you know, we may have to kind of take our own approach in the city of Baldwin Park. And until we get to a level of comfort that, okay, you know what, yeah, this, this, okay, now we are, now we're understanding now, this is making sense. But if you tell me that there are more homeless people in the city of Baldwin Park than Pasadena, it's not making sense.
So definitely, I think the biggest piece is the collaboration. I appreciate that. And we're here to support, you know, in this effort moving forward. I had mentioned to Eurico that we're definitely looking at how do we involve the independent cities, neighborhood councils, and council governments a lot sooner in the review process. So we're definitely open to, again, improvements in our, in the homeless count process. And I think, you know, definitely being this partner and bringing some of those things up is definitely going to help the whole community in general. So we do, we'll definitely share that information that my data management colleagues are going to bring out for you. And just, you know, looking forward to working with you on, on this.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have any other questions? Okay, now that this, I want to thank you very much for participating. Thank you. All righty, so at this point, I believe we're going to go into closed session, am I correct?
Yes, that's correct, Mayor.
All right, okay.
We'll need to log off and sign back in.
Oh, thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank, thank you all.
Guys.
Night.
Night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye-bye.